Good evening. My name is Ed Ruth and I am the chairman for tonight's meeting. I'd like to welcome you to the April 24th, 2023 Board of Adjustment Public Meeting. I ask everyone to stand for a flag salute and a moment of silence. I place allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for This meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act as adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by mailing to the annual schedule of meetings to the Union County Local Source and the Star Ledger by posting such annual meeting schedule on the bulletin board in the town hall reserved for such announcement and filing of said notice with the township clerk. Formal action may be taken at this meeting. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Mark Hayden.
Here.
Douglas Crock.
Here.
John Calligwar.
Here.
Chris Tierney.
Here.
William Helm.
Here.
Ed Ruth.
Before I ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, I want to ensure that all the members have read the minutes in their entirety or familiar with them. I'd also like to commend Janet for her eruditean job in getting the minutes together. Thank you, Janet. May I have a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting?
Make a motion, Mark Hayden.
I have a second.
Second, Doug Crock.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved. Several pieces of correspondence. Janet has provided me with a memorandum regarding changes in the building department. This is to inform you that Mike Cota has retired from Clark Township as construction and zoning official. After so many years of dedicated service to the Township of Clark and the construction department, Mike Cota will certainly be missed. Mr. Art Figurito is now the township's construction official and Mr. Mike Giusefek is the zoning officer. We wish Mike well on his retirement and thank him for his many years of service. We'll enter this now into the official minutes for tonight's meeting. Another reminder to all the members, you should have received an email regarding the financial disclosure requirements for 2023, and these documents are to be completed by each individual member by the 30th of April. So if you haven't had a chance to do it, please don't neglect it. And a last piece of information for the board. One of our members informed us tonight, and the reason why he's not here is Tom Mead, as his brother passed away yesterday. So we remember Tom and his family at this moment. All right. Stepping away from the posted agenda, and with your permission, Mr. Pardo, we're considering taking our second application because it's a shorter application, if you will, and then go to yours. So we'll begin the meeting with application 4-23. This is Mr. Nicholas Robleski.
Good evening, Ward. Thank you for having me here tonight.
You're welcome. Do you want to swear?
So we're just going to swear you in first?
I believe she checked these already. I'm not sure.
Yes, I think she did.
She did, right?
Send them to me, yes.
Want to keep them?
Yes, just hold on to them. So I'm going to have you raise your right hand and repeat after me or respond to what I'm going to say. Do you solemnly swear to or affirm that the testimony you are about to give in this matter is the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
And now can you state and spell your name for the record?
My name is Nicholas Robleski, N-I-C-H-O-L-A-S, Robleski, W-R-O-B-L-E-S-K-I. I live at 92 St. Laurent Drive, Clark, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Mr. Robleski, would you like to present your case to the board, please?
Sure. Thank you. So my name is Nicholas Robleski. I live at 92 St. Laurent Drive. I'm coming here tonight because I'm applying for a variance approval for a front porch overhang. The front porch overhang is planned to be on an existing front porch that was built in 1998 by my father when my parents bought the house in 1996. During this variance process, it was discovered that the permits or that the porch was built with a permit in 1998. It was believed to be done without permit beforehand. So I'm not sure if that considers it as an existing structure, but I'm here before you today because I need the variance approval as a nonexisting structure. In my letter, I just briefly stated that we wish to cover the porch as part of a larger renovation that actually began today. So we're very excited about that. And as our contractor is going through with the renovations, part of that is to have the existing porch covered, but that will require a variance. So that's why I'm here today.
And now you do agree to the condition that it can never be enclosed?
Correct.
Your request is for the existing porch, which is seven foot by 17, that the overhang cover that area?
Correct. The full existing 17-foot-by-seven-foot porch will be covered, but not enclosed. Essentially, the plans are just to place three or four support pillars, have a porch overhang extend to the front of the porch, would be seven feet away from the house, and that's it. It will not cover the steps, and it's not going to extend over the porch, it's just to the perimeter of the porch.
Thank you. Are there any witnesses that you have to substantiate your request?
Only my fiancee, if she would like to speak, but I think she's comfortable where she is.
Do any of the members have any questions of our applicant?
No.
I see no one here to, on the floor, to make comment, so we'll move to a motion to approve the application. May I have such a motion?
Make a motion to approve calendar case 4-23.
I have a second.
Second.
Voice vote. Roll call. Janet?
Okay, Mark Hayden.
Yes.
Douglas Crock.
Yes.
John Calligwar.
Yes.
Chris Tierney.
Yes.
William Helm.
Yes.
Ed Ruth.
Yes.
That's it.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, at our next meeting, we will be passing a resolution certifying that you came to the board, presented your case, and you're allowed to move forward.
Okay.
The only stipulation is until that resolution is codified, you really can't begin any of that construction.
No problem. I'll make that clear to my contractor.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time tonight. Moving on to our other case, this is 3-23. I see, Mr. Pardo, you're here this evening?
Yes, good evening.
As well as your architect and...
Planner.
Your planner. Since you've already been sworn in, and so has your architect, we can have the planner be sworn in as well.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give in this matter is the truth and the whole truth?
I do.
And can you please state and spell your name for the record?
Yes, my first name is Nicholas with an H, last name Graviano, G-R-A-V-I-A-N-O. I'm a planner and partner with Graviano and Gillis Architects and Planners at a business address of 101 Crawford's Corner Road in Holmdel, New Jersey. Must be Nick night tonight.
And sir, are you required to be licensed?
Yes.
Okay. And are you licensed in New Jersey?
Yes, I'm a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey. I hold an AICP certification. I've also been qualified by this board.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Pardo, do you want to continue your testimony about your application? And then we'll have your planner.
Yes.
I know he has read through both the letters of our engineer, Rich O'Connor, as well as our town planner, Mr. Ritchie.
Thank you.
And for purposes of this evening's meeting, since Rich is also a licensed planner, he will address any of the questions that were in the town planner's correspondence.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rich.
Basically, off of our last meeting, I took the recommendation in hiring a planner, and we made a couple of changes to the building based on the letter that we received, trying to get a little better option to what we're doing. So Roger could kind of explain a little bit better what we did to the building as far as cutting it back some, so.
Good evening. Again, Roger Grutzmaier. I'm Don Pardo's architect. The board here is the previous one where we showed the addition that pretty much extended all the way, I'll call it the right side, sightline. It's almost right up against the property we know, and the rear lot line is almost right up against it. It matches up with the existing garage. What we've done to try and mitigate that, and I'm going to flip this over. This is, we'll call this drawing T1A. It's a revision of the existing drawing. What this drawing shows is up in the, up top here is a revised floor plan where we've moved the partition with a five-foot setback from the right side, side yard setback, so we're in compliance there. The garage size has been reduced accordingly. What is also shown here is a revised rear elevation where we've closed up all the openings that were on that side, the overhead door, the windows that were there, and that wall, since it's only a little over a foot from the property line. It's all non-c combustible. It'll be a code issue. Who's the new building inspector? What was his name? We'll have to...
He's new. I don't even know.
Yeah, but that's okay. We'll get to that point. But what's the finishes that are here, it's more residential. It's all going to be hardy sided with composite, non-c combustible siding to make it a little bit more of a, instead of just a flat facade. As you can see here, the top portion is a battened board, hardy plank, and then the bottom portion, which you can see is a horizontal siding, which is also hardy. And the color, it's hard to match the color of the house. It's this blue, kinda aqua blue. Hardy doesn't have that, and I'm not a big fan of painting hardy, you can, but I'm not a big fan of that. So the finishes will probably be white on the bottom and maybe a taupe-y kind of color on top, just to give it a little bit of a break. What's kind of different, you can kind of see it here in the elevation, is that on the, facing the rear lot, it's only 14 feet high because the roof is sloped, and then going back towards the house, it rises up to the 16-foot height. So what you'll see from the other property is a shingled roof, there's a fascia board, a freeze board underneath that, the battened siding below that, the transition between that and the horizontal siding will be, also be a beadboard there, and then down to the elevation where there'll be a parched, about an eight or nine inch, you know, portion of the foundation that'll be exposed there. I've got, there's a revised bulk schedule here. I've got copies of that. Would you want, I can hand them?
Yes.
Might be easier for you.
Well, please.
Now, I need my glasses.
Roger, just to clarify, how close is the wall going to be to the rear yard line?
It's the, it's the same as it was. It matches, runs right along the existing house and it's... Where's that? It's hard for me to see here. I'm sorry, what is it?
The side yard, I guess, is the one that's more concerning.
Yeah, the side yard, it's the five feet. The other is the existing garage, but the rear line is going to be 1.19 feet, which aligns with the existing garage. The, did you pass this out, Janet? What you see there, you see what's changed, and on the far right portion of that schedule, you see kind of in bold and italics, the setbacks or the bulk issues that have been changed. One is obviously the right side yard setback, or the left side is five feet now. The maximum building coverage is 44 because it'll reduce square footage to 41.4, and then the total, maximum total coverage that was at 71 is now at 68%.
Do you know the square footage of the proposed garage in total?
The new square footage of the garage is 781 square feet, reduced from the 800, what was it, 800 and 31? Is that what it was?
Is the fence being continued along that line?
Fence up along the rear property line?
The side property line.
Fence, the existing fence is there.
Where the building is, there's no fence.
Correct.
Is that fence going to be continued across that face?
Yeah, that five feet that we cut back, we would put a piece of fence there.
And the door opening onto the VFW property is now eliminated, correct?
All rear facades.
Right.
Windows as well. I was going to recommend possibly shutters, but it's too expensive. The slope of the roof, is that unchanged? No, the slope is the same. It's going to be built-up roof. We're going to apply shingles, so it gives it more of a residential look.
Was some concern about the runoff from that type of roof. Is that being addressed?
Yeah, the store management, we're going to, there'll be a gutter, and it'll have downspouts that'll tie in. That'll be part of our engineering requirement for building permit. We'll submit that. Because we're going to have, I guess we're going to have Deck Guariello on that for store management.
Rich, is that acceptable, or?
If the board chooses to approve the application, that'll be acceptable. We can review that at the time of building permit.
So you just said the roof is not changed, except for just, it's going to be shingled now?
We had, the original proposal was to have it either as a single ply or built-up or shingled. I'm concerned about the slope. It can't just be shingled. It has to be, we have to have a single ply or built-up roof under that because of the slope. It's less than 312, but the shingles will...
Walk into the mic, please.
Can you hear me? But the, yeah, but the shingles will give it more of a residential feel.
Okay, so it still has the same shape as before?
Yes.
The straight, all the way?
Yes.
Anything else?
Yeah, I would like to introduce a planner to those issues.
Yes, of course.
Okay, as stated previously, my name is Nicholas Graviano. I'm the applicant's planner for this project. The applicant is here this evening requesting a D2 expansion of a nonconforming use variance as well as associated C variances for proposed conditions and existing conditions which are not being affected by this application. The applicant has owned this property since approximately 2005, 2006. Since this property's construction, it has been a two-family dwelling. The applicant is not changing anything to the living situation of the house. As you all know, this is simply related to a garage addition in the rear of the property. With respect to the neighboring properties, this property is bordered by Block 93, Lot 5, that's 37 Lincoln. That is the applicant's home. Additionally, the property is bordered to the east by 14 Broadway. That is the White House, essentially to the right of the house. And to the north of the property is the VFW property consisting of four separate tax lots. The applicant is requesting the D2 variance for the expansion of the nonconforming use as well as C variances who permit excess building coverage, whereas the applicant is now requesting building coverage of 41.48%, which is a reduction of 2.6% from the previous iteration of the applicant's plan. Additionally, the applicant's requesting an impervious coverage of 68%, whereas 71% was previously proposed, a reduction of 3%. The applicant is also eliminating the need for the side yard setback variance, the setback variance to the neighbor at 14 Broadway is now the code requirement. And when I met with the applicant and he looked to bring me on as a planner, I said, listen, you do have to make a modification to this plan. If you make that modification and create that five-yard setback, you're creating a conforming condition to that neighbor. Therefore, you have the applicant's property on the other side, which is not being affected by this application, the setback of the garage in that location staying the same. And then, as you saw from Roger's architectural plans, you just have that modest addition following the existing setback line of the garage to the VFW property. So that's a pretty, it's a pretty simple proposal in a nutshell. Moving on to the other variances required, the applicant is deficient in lot area, that's an existing condition, lot with front yard setback for the existing dwelling, side yard setback of the existing dwelling, and the setbacks for the garage I went over. The applicant is conforming to the required height of the district. Moving on, in Mr. Ritchie's letter, he asked for the use of the existing and proposed garage. The applicant is doing this garage addition for the use of his tenants and for himself. As I stated, the applicant lives next door. It'll simply be used for storage of residential goods and motor vehicles of the applicant and the applicant's tenants. The planning letter also...
Right now, that's in that garage is more construction equipment.
Well, the item in the garage, which everybody sees is the snowplow. The applicant, you know, did, you know, work with the VFW on maintenance of that facility. However, the applicant, you know, heard the board's concerns, heard the board planner's concerns, eliminated that garage access in the rear. So, you know, this garage is solely going to be used for the applicant and the applicant's tenants, and there will not be any commercial materials stored in that garage. With respect to the off-street parking, the applicant's proposed detached garage will accommodate two vehicles. Additionally, the driveway has the ability to handle four vehicles. The planning letter did address the applicant's RV being in the driveway. I would like to note that the applicant's tenants right now only have two vehicles. They are accommodated in the driveway. Off-street parking is not required for them. If that scenario changes and the applicant has new tenants or the tenants get additional vehicles, he'll move the RV off-site.
Mr. Graviano, there may need to be another variance for the RV under our off-street parking ordinance, 195143, Part B. RVs are allowed parked behind the front yard setback, but they're also supposed to be six feet from an adjoining side yard. So it appears that the six-foot distance isn't met from the side of the RV to the property line.
I think that is a fair assessment. You know, my field observations on two occasions did observe the RV parked beyond the front yard setback line. However, you know, given the nature of this 1930s construction, the driveways were built on the property line, as the board knows, very common condition throughout the township. So I'll put on the variance proofs for that variance as well. Roger went into the architectural design of the building. That's another thing I requested of the applicant, is that he make the building more residential in appearance. Historically, the garage was a masonry block structure. I feel that the applicant's use of a very appealing hardy plank in two different colors and two different styles certainly creates a residential appearance of this proposed accessory structure. That certainly helps with the planner's question of neighborhood compatibility. This no longer will look like a commercial structure. This will look like a residential detached garage that's befitting of a residential neighborhood. I did have a chance to observe numerous detached accessory structures in the neighborhood. They certainly are not an exception. They do exist. So, you know, given the layout of this lot, you'll see a very modest portion of the detached garage from the driveway. The rest of this garage is going to be blocked by the dwelling itself.
Sir, did you address the building codes allowing windows for accessory buildings, less than three feet from property line?
Yes, the architectural testimony touched on that. That's why he removed those windows in the rear and removed the garage door in the rear as well. The applicant will conform to all applicable building code requirements in the event of approval.
So there will be no windows across, looking on to the VFW property?
That is correct, Mr. Ruth. And you'll see the architect's exhibit for this evening with revised rear elevation of the garage. You'll see no openings there, just a contrasting...
Hard to see on that diagram, but it looks like they're, that is going to be covered in.
Yes.
Does it look like windows from here?
No, that is, that's the battens to give it some architectural features and not just have one flat plane of hardy plank siding. That gives it a little bit definition, speaking to the, you know, architectural compatibility and the residential design of this structure.
I still have an issue with the setback, the rear setback, that you're only, you can buy your new recommendations. It's supposed to be five foot, and you've got 1.19. Supposed to be five foot, and you've got 1.19 feet. Now, that is existing, but was that where the original garage sat?
Yes, the original-
Has it been moved back closer to the rear property line?
The original garage was 1.19. This building follows that plane. So the, the original footprint of the rear setback has not been altered. You'll see on the architect's exhibit, the dashed line to the left is the addition, that's 11 feet long. The rest of the structure was the original structure's footprint.
The original garage, when Mr. Pardo bought the property?
Yes, sir. So the applicant's only adding 11 feet to the existing garage.
When you observed other houses in the area, they have a similar, very foot or-
I, I've observed numerous accessory structures that appeared to be on the property line, or it wasn't discernible how far it's set back. You know, I can't access people's properties. I can only do what I could see from the street and through Google Earth aerial photography. This certainly was an exceptional situation. And I would like to note, you know, an important element of this proposal is that the applicant is meeting a setback to the neighbor at 14 Broadway. So that, that resident will see what you would have in a conforming scenario. The applicant lives next door. The applicant is not changing the other side yard setback. That side yard setback is existing. And then to the rear of the property, obviously, is the VFW hall, which is a nonresidential use. This building almost serves as like a buffer from the residential to the nonresidential use. So given those three characteristics, I felt that the applicant's scaled-back proposal was contextually sufficient and not causing a substantial detriment to the surrounding neighbors, because, one, that setback exists, exists for the DPW now, DF, VFW. I live by a DPW, so I get that. The VFW hall, it's a commercial, a nonresidential use, it's a parking lot. So this building, you know, serves as a, a buffer between the residential and the nonresidential use. I think that's key. You know, I'll get in now to the D2 variance proofs. The applicant must prove the positive and negative criteria. New Jersey courts have ruled that the granting of the D2 variance may be found in the fact that the variance, if granted, would tend to minimize the nonconforming and make it more acceptable in its particular setting. I think this improvement to the garage, getting rid of the very commercial and industrial masonry block garage in lieu of a very attractive hardy plank, two-tone garage, certainly improves the overall visual compatibility of this accessory structure with the residential nature of the neighborhood. Certainly advances Purpose A of the municipal land use law, promotion of the general health, safety, morals, and welfare. Additionally, it helps advance Purpose G, to provide sufficient space in appropriate location for variety of residential uses to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. In this case, you know, you have an applicant that's, that's lived in the township since the late 90's, is investing in the improvement of his properties. Moving on to certainly advancing Purpose I, promoting a desirable visual environment and good civic design and arrangements. Certainly feel that there is not a substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance with this proposal. It, it is an undersized lot, and the applicant is simply looking to add an 11-foot addition to the garage to meet the needs of himself, as well as his tenants. With respect to the C variances, all the existing conditions variances that are not changed by this application can be granted under the C1 criteria due to an exceptional situation affecting a specific piece of property. There's no substantial impairment to the zoning ordinance with the granting of those existing conditions variances. In terms of the proposed variances that I highlighted earlier in my testimony, they could be granted under the C2 criteria, where hardship need not be demonstrated, what must be demonstrated that it relates to a specific piece of property. You have a specific piece of property with a detached accessory structure located at the rear property line. It must also advance purposes of zoning. I certainly feel that it advances the same purposes of zoning as given with the D2 expansion of a nonconforming use variance, specifically purposes A, G, and I. When you look at the very modest square footage of this addition, I certainly do not feel that there's a substantial impairment to the zone plan with this addition as well.
Can you just also address, I know there's a concern that if permitted to remain, the garage could potentially limit future development on the VFW property due to some local fire code requirements, like due to distances between the buildings. Do you like that at all?
I do not think that it'll impact future development of the VFW property, because the VFW property consists of four lots. The VFW property has the same zoning as the applicant, which is the R60. If that, if it was subdivided to accommodate single-family dwellings as per permitted use, the lot lines of where these properties converge would be in the extreme rear of these dwellings. When you look at the tax map, when you look at the tax map, the property boundary of the VFW property is a car, pretty much like at the 40% point from the southern boundary of the property. So that would be in those properties' rear yards. I really don't see how that could have an impact on developing those properties, because this conditions exist today, and whether this variance is granted or not, the applicant's going to have a detached accessory structure, you know, a little bit over a foot from the property line.
You are recommending a 781-square-foot garage, as opposed to the original proposal, which was 851. Two-car garage by ordinance, as I read it, is limited to 650 square feet.
Yes, sir.
So we're talking about another 131 square feet that you're in violation, I would say, of the set ordinance.
Yes, we certainly recognize that.
And then one other thing I just want to have you address. I know you guys spoke a little bit about the stormwater management. I know that at the time of the building permit application, that you guys would have had to submit a plot plan for grading and runoff. I'm not sure if you did, and maybe you can give us some testimony on, you know, how the water's routed to the street draining system and not to the adjoining other properties?
The applicant hasn't applied for a building permit yet. That was part of the issue with the application. Had the applicant applied, he would have had to do that already. So as a condition of whatever the board is going to decide tonight, they're amenable to having to apply to the building department first for a demolition permit for the portion of the garage that's already been illegally constructed, that's too close to the property line. And the second would be for the building permits for the garage addition itself, and that would show the proposed stormwater management and how they're going to connect the roof leaders through the curb.
Thank you.
Getting back to my question about the extra 131 feet, square feet, if that garage was moved forward more to the center of the property, in order to get that setback, is that even feasible?
Well, the, you know, the existing garage and foundation exists. You know, the applicant, you know, admits the error of his ways and is willing to demolish, you know, the portion that's abutting, what would be Block 93, Lot 7. However, you know, I personally think from a design standpoint, having that structure at the rear of the property gives more of a backyard space. You know, right now, the, the space to the side of the garage is kind of a dead area. It's not really usable. So I think in this context, and listen, not every scenario is the same. Every application has its own merits. I think, given the fact that this applicant's meeting a setback to the neighbor at 14 Broadway and is continuing an existing plane on the VFW nonresidential parking lot, and the applicant owning the house next door that's not affected by this, I do not feel that there's a detriment. I think this is actually a better planning scenario, having it at the rear property line.
It's going to become a detriment if Mr. Pardo was to sell his house, which is next door, and the new owner had an issue.
Well, the new owner's getting a scenario which exists today. You know, the applicant's not changing that part of this application. That setback on the close to the property line exists, and it's not being changed by this application. And whoever buys it would be going into knowing that, you know, that condition exists. You know, that's why I made the applicant change the plans, to meet the setback to the neighbor at 14 Broadway, and he certainly was accommodating.
Any other questions from board members of this witness?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to clear up with Mr. Pardo whether the vehicle that's shown in the planner's report is from his construction company or some other entity? You wouldn't be able to park that on the VFW lot without permission and without the VFW actually obtaining some approvals themselves?
Right. Well, we spoke with the vehicle. So, yes, that vehicle actually won't be parked there, and we made some arrangements for now with the VFW.
Okay. Are the campers and boats that are parked at the, those are not yours?
Come to the mic, please.
The, the recreational vehicles in the VFW parking lot are not the applicant's.
There's two enclosed trailers there. Those, either one of those yours?
No.
How about the small cement mixer?
Yes.
That is yours?
We had a repair on it, and it's taken out of there.
Okay.
Rich, do you want to ask any other further questions?
I guess the only suggestion that I would have would be towards the people from the VFW that are seated to the rear. The presence of those RVs, boats, and storage trailers is creating a violation of the zoning ordinance in relation to your lot and subjecting the VFW to enforcement potentially. So you should work with the township zoning officer to clean that up, either through making an application of your own to have, allow the storage of those features, or to have them removed before an enforcement action would begin.
All right. If there are no other questions from members of the board? Have any comments from our audience? Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you, Board. The applicant would like the ability to address any potential comments from anybody the public makes before the closing of the occasion. Thank you.
Yes, you'll be allowed to do that, Mr. Pardo, in your summation after hearing from-
David Mormak, M-O-R-M-A-K, 24 Millia Drive, Clark. On behalf of the VFW-
Excuse me, sir. Did we swear you in last time?
Yes.
Okay, beautiful, thank you.
He, his application is he's going to enclose the back of the garage. We really have no problem with the windows. I don't see where to, that's with the building department, I guess, if he has to remove them or keep them. We have no problem with the windows. We have made arrangements for him to use, park his trucks on our property on a temporary basis, because he's working locally. And we will do whatever, we'll talk to the township about what we got to do for the trailers that we are rentals right there right now. That's really all I got to say.
Thank you. Hi. So I'm just going to swear you in really quickly. So do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give in this matter is the truth and the whole truth? And now, can you state your, state and spell your name for the record?
Daniela Fano, D-A-N-I-E-L-A-F-A-N-O. I live at 14 Broadway in Clark.
Thank you.
So, good evening, everybody. Our concern today is about the extension, Don Dominic's, Mr. Pardo's backyard in his rental property, from our garage to basically a two-story building. So our concern is that this new two-story building looms over my property, and furthermore, it is built right against my fence. I believe this is disregarding the city regulations for a required five-feet setback from our property and our fence. So this is basically what we are concerned about, because when we build our fence, when we build our shed, when we build our pool, we submitted the, you know, the proper and required permit with everything in it. And I remember they said they needed a five-feet setback from the property. So that, it's basically our concern, because not only an eyesore, and I understand it's not completed, but it's, we, it's not safe. Like I said, it's right against my fence. And, you know, every time you need to do, like, painting or gutter work or anything, you know, it's okay, you just let us know, and then-
I'm not sure if you see-
This is what I used to look before. I would just like to address-
What is that, sir?
Sir, we're going to let them finish their public-
This is what we had to look at for the past three years.
Do you want to bring that up here? You guys want to look at the pictures? So, you want to just hand them to Dan?
You provide those to the board secretary?
Yep.
And they can be marked as exhibits?
So, since I have these in my hands, so the swimming pool, I think you said, was before, what do you mean by that?
The round swimming pool, we, that was before, that was there just a few months when we went. I went for the permits. They said if it's just a temporary one, you don't need a permit. Then other one is, like, half in-ground above. That one is with a permit, and that one has, I mean, both of them had-
Swimming pools are your property, I got it.
Yes.
Yeah, we just want to show you what the garage looked like before.
The round one is the temporary one, that was before.
No, that's, that's-
I understand the context now, thank you.
Go on.
As a matter of fact, there's a plastic canyon on my side right now. The tarp has broken off from the window.
But I just want to make it clear, and I'm sure someone else will bring this up, but the, the testimony today is that the revised submitted plans, they will have a five-yard setback. I don't know if you appreciated that yet, but they're, they're going to remove 10, yeah, they're going to, they're going to remove five feet from there. So if, that's what the application currently is.
Because they were talking about, you know, the other property and then everything that is grandfather, because the original building doesn't have the five feet, but that's grandfather, we understand that. But the garage did have. So that's what's on our question. Yeah?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one question of the other member of the audience, Mr. Michael Hikeck. Just one question of the other member of the audience, Mr. Michael Hikek. Were you going to address our meeting tonight?
Good evening, Michael Fitzhock. I was sworn in last time, 19, Roselle Avenue, 120 Ann Beach Street, Cranford. I'm one of the officers, the senior vice commander at the post, and we did have a conversation as reflected in the record. And just like Dave Mormak said, we've agreed that, you know, the entrance is closed, that we're fine with it. Thank you.
Does not present any hardship to you?
Exactly. So we agree.
I'm just going to take a look at those photos that were provided. Any other comments from board members on this case?
I have one.
Yes.
Even after taking the five feet off, you look at the picture, if you look at the pictures, it's still going to be almost double the size what was existing. Is that correct in saying that?
No.
No?
No, even if...
As I stated in my previous testimony, the applicant's adding 11 feet, this is the 11 feet right here, it's certainly far less than half than what the existing length of the structure is. The applicant's lot is 40 feet wide, so this, the existing garage is 23 feet, the applicant's adding 11, so it's less than...
What is the square foot of the addition, sir?
Square foot of the addition is 11 by 23.
It's a full car garage.
252 square feet.
And 528 exists, so it is, it is doubling the size of the garage. You're 50% increasing the square footage of the garage.
It's less.
Very little less.
Mike, please.
Sorry.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to ask a question about the front of the garage. In these pictures we were just shown, there's windows on the front?
There are windows on the front, yes.
Okay.
The, so I think I understood the conversation about the hardy board replacing the, or going over the cinder block, right? In the rear, windows are coming out. What are the, what are the sides going to be?
The hardy board? The whole structure is going to be hardy plank, all four sides. The applicant wants us to be aesthetically pleasing from the VFW as well from the streetscape from Lincoln.
And the whole structure is going to be wide open when you walk into the garage, right up to the roof?
There's no loft or anything, it's just simply, you know, to bring light into the garage.
It's open space.
Excuse me?
Lot of open space inside.
Yeah, but it's, it's creating light in there.
Not used for storage or of any type?
Only storage of household goods and vehicles, no, no commercial storage whatsoever. The applicant would be willing to stipulate that in the event of approval.
We haven't seen a photo of the front of the garage. Are there two standard garage doors there, or they...
Just one, I believe it's a 14 and 16-foot door in front, just one big door. And then to the right of that is a single empty door, that's a passenger door.
That's the future view you just described?
I'm sorry?
That's the future view you just described?
Correct. Well, there's an existing, the doors there existing now.
The 16-foot garage door.
I believe it's 16, either 16 or 14, yeah.
And on the addition, the additional 10 or 11 feet, you will have a, just a standard 36, 40?
Yeah, just to walk in.
16-foot wouldn't be enough for two cars to go in?
Yeah, side by side.
They would have to go in and go to a side, right?
Correct, side by side.
It's not, they couldn't drive, if one car was already in the garage, the second one couldn't get in.
No, sir, that, that is a standard two-car garage-sized door.
Yeah.
But presently, the campers blocks all of that.
Yes, as I indicated, the applicant's tenants do only have two vehicles, and even with the RV in the driveway, there's space for two vehicles. I observed it before the meeting tonight.
Okay, so all this extra space for the garage is not for cars?
It could be used for cars. Presently, the applicant does have his RV in the driveway. The applicant's not hiding anything in this, this scenario, so...
I'm curious of what the future use of the garage would be, that's all.
Storage for the applicant and the applicant's tenants.
781 square feet.
Yes. You know, the applicant, you know, has, has recreational vehicles, you know, jet skis, things of the like, that the tenants have storage needs. You know, the applicant has been a long-term resident of his property, has owned this property, you know, for 18 years now, and is committed to the betterment of these properties and the betterment of the living situations for the people that live in the properties.
You've made changes for the, to make it more aesthetically pleasing, but we have testimony right here that it didn't improve for this neighbor.
Well, the applicant has met a conforming condition on that neighborhood's property.
That's the side step back.
The applicant has met the side yard setback, so if the applicant demolished the structure in entirety and wanted to build one new, the applicant could have the garage of that size five feet from the property line. So that neighbor is not being adversely impacted by anything that the applicant's doing this evening.
But the overall aesthetic of this garage isn't very traditional.
I would say it's very traditional now that the applicant is proposing hardy plank. The applicant isn't cheaping out with vinyl siding. You know, if you, if you look at the historic homes throughout Clark and the surrounding neighborhoods of Cranford and Westfield, you know, traditional siding is the predominant siding type of the dwellings and accessory structures in these neighborhoods. I would contend that the applicant's pre-existing condition is, is out of the norm, a masonry block detached accessory structure. This, this is more fitting into the neighborhood than what you had before.
You've seen those pictures you gave us, right? Or that they supplied us?
You're looking at an unfinished structure that has not had the benefit of having siding.
The reference was really to the first, the garage that was there before. It's a big difference.
Yeah, I think this one's better.
And the siding, I don't think is the issue, it's the windows on the front. What about that? I can't say I've seen a garage with windows like that.
I think the windows add definitely a architectural element that gives it a little bit of pizzazz, and the applicant's not requesting a height variance. The applicant is in conformance with the township's height number, so I would agree with you. If the applicant was asking for a height variance, yeah, those windows would be a problem, but the applicant isn't asking for a height variance. So I think it adds a decorative element from the streetscape as well as giving the garage an opportunity to have natural light without using light from, from artificial means during the daytime.
Would you say that with those windows, to me, it does not look like a garage? Do you agree with that or no?
Yeah, I think it looks better than a garage.
Okay, but it's supposed to be a garage.
It is a garage, just the applicant has chosen a design that allows for natural light and has windows on an accessory structure. Windows on accessory structures aren't uncommon.
The windows that were in the back would necessarily be in the front of the garage now. Is that what, above the garage?
Yes, there will be four windows above the garage within the applicant's property.
Actually, it'll be three.
I'm sorry, three.
Yeah.
Because they shaved the building down, so there's going to be three windows spaced instead of four.
And there is a designated space for the tenants to use that garage?
Yes.
Their personal, under some sort of lock or interior I'm talking about?
It's just going to be an open garage, you know, the, all three of these people know each other well, and, and, you know, they're going to have unfettered access to the garage together, so it's not going to be any designated cages or rooms or anything like that. It's, you know, these people have lived together for a long time and trust each other.
Any other questions, gentlemen, or from our attorney?
No questions from me, but does Mr. Pardo want to make a closing statement?
Yes.
To the board?
Mr. Pardo, would you want to make a closing statement?
I'll do it on behalf of Mr. Pardo.
All right.
I think here you have an applicant that wants to work with the board. The applicant has shaved back this project, has met what the applicant needs on his neighbor's property to provide that five feet of separation, has, has provided the hardy plank to give the garage a residential appearance, is committed to closing up all of the openings on the VFW property, is more than willing to agree to limit the garage uses for solely residential storage of vehicles and other goods. So certainly, I think the applicant has justified the D2 variance expansion of the garage. The garage is being expanded in a part of the rear yard, which really doesn't serve much, much purpose, and all of the C variances could be granted without substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance.
You had another comment, please?
I, sorry. The setback is going to be done from the corner marker or from my fence? You have to come up to the mic, please, repeat what you said. Sorry, my question is, is the setback going to be from the corner markers of the property or from my fence?
The setback is from the property line.
Okay, because right now, my corner marker on that side, it has disappeared. I don't know if it was because of the construction or it's being covered by the current construction, which I know is going to be moved. That's like, when I wanted to make sure, because my property is kind of like this, and my fence is a 90-degree angle because we wanted it to be, you know, pleasing to the eye. That's like, so my property actually goes that way.
Their obligation is that the five-foot setback is parallel to the actual property line.
But from the corner marker, not my fence?
Assuming the corner marker is correct, that's on the property line, so the applicant has to put his setback parallel to the property line and at least five feet away from it.
And the applicant would be willing to locate the property monument, and if one doesn't exist, we'll install one.
Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion on this application. Rich, did you have anything else before?
Nothing to add, Mr. Chairman.
All right. At this point, I'll entertain a motion on this application as revised and shown to us this evening. Any of the members willing to make a motion, or...
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to deny the application. I don't feel the burden of proof has been met here for the extra space required or being asked for. I do not agree that the aesthetic has been, I guess, updated where it will look like the standard garages that we see in town, especially after seeing the pictures from the neighbors here. It's, it's pretty apparent this is a rather large structure. There's also information in a construction zoning official letter. There was a statement saying a two-family house falls under a non-conforming pre-existing use, which cannot be altered or expanded. And I'm not convinced of, there's a possibility of some sort of business use going on, possibly. Could be in the future. This is a very large garage being put up. I know VFW is on board at this point, which is good because there will be no access, but that's fine. But there's a lot of business, we got the vehicles on the lot, it's just, I don't think that could be excluded from future dealings, so for... And there's also the fact that this work was done without permits. I would feel a contractor should know that permits would be required for such a structure. I mean, the original structure went the full width. So for all these reasons stated, I would like to make a motion to deny this application.
You have a motion to deny the application?
I'm going to second that motion.
Second?
Doug Crock, seconding that motion. I had four sticking points on this garage. Two of them have been addressed. The back door's been removed, and the side setback's been fixed. But the overall square footage allowed in town is 650 square feet. Your current, as revised, is a 48% increase in size, and it's 20% over what we allow. I'd also like to see the rear setback moved in 3.8 feet to give you the five foot off the back of the property. We're taking an existing, non-conforming structure and making it more non-conforming. I don't want to go that way on this application. I will vote against this application. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to disapprove, and a second. A roll call?
Mark Hayden. If you, you have to explain to the board members if they're denying, they vote yes. If they're against denying, they vote no.
Yes.
How are you voting?
Okay. Mark Hayden, I couldn't hear him.
Yes, no, against.
Okay. Doug Crock?
Yes.
John Calligwar?
Yes.
Christiane?
Yes.
William Helm?
Yes.
Ed Ruth?
Yes.
Board having addressed the issue, and I would agree with my colleagues as far as the need for this to be, garage to be downsized and that the other obligations be met. At this point, I would say get back to the construction department and see where you go from here.
For the demolition?
Yep.
I understand.
Is there anything else, Rich, that I'm missing? Okay, very good. Thank you for your time this evening, we appreciate it. Are there any other issues, resolutions, or further discussion at this time? If not, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Have a motion, please.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Oh, wait, I wasn't on...
Motion to adjourn, Doug Crock?
Oh.
Second, John Calligwar.
Okay, Crock and Calligwar.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, and lady, for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.